Meeting for June 5th, 2018. Welcome, everyone. And please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see you all. I just want to publicly acknowledge a major accomplishment by our superintendent. Congratulations, Dr. Lamia. Just passed her. Publicly congratulate you. And pretty remarkable considering this is your first year as a superintendent. You took it on at the same time.
I'm aging like the president. Or some other president.
We're really proud of your accomplishment.
Thank you.
And it's great to see everybody out here. And in just a few minutes, we're going to get to celebrate some other incredible leaders in our district. And we look forward to having that conversation. But first, for the record, the meeting was opened at 6:45, and we went right into executive session. And we discussed 3.1, which is a legal matter, claims auditor. And we discussed 3.2, which was a negotiations matter, CSEA. And 3.3, which was a personnel matter, individual employee. And we're going to... Let's see if we do this. And we discussed 3.4, which was a personnel matter, individual employee. We're going to come back after the public meeting to discuss item 3.5, which was a contract matter, BHTA. And 3.6, a personnel matter, superintendent's evaluation.
Ooh.
And 3.7, board education matters, succession planning. At this time, are there any comments from the public of any items not on tonight's agenda? None? Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
And a second. And all in favor? And can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda for personnel, special services, and business?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and with that quick vote, we just did some notable business. And with that vote, we just confirmed our appreciation, support, and our commitment to some incredible individuals in our district who really are proving to be instrumental in the success of our district. And we are excited to welcome our new tenure.
Well, what did we just do?
You've got to read the board packet. It's too late, Ira.
Oh, my.
I'm going to turn it over to Jen. I'm going to turn it over to Jen, who's going to talk more. So first, I would like to welcome Brittany Tompkins, who's in the back. Brittany, if you just want to raise your hand and wave to the camera. Brittany is going to be our new physics teacher in the high school come fall. We're very excited to have you. Brittany comes to us from Carmel High School, where she is currently doing a leave replacement position. And we were very fortunate. Physics is not an easy bucket to fill. We had a phenomenal interview process, a lesson that Chris Walsh observed in the classroom in Dep K, the science chairperson. And then Tim and I met with Brittany and had an interview. And Brittany, when you left, you should know that Tim and I turned to each other and we said, "That was the best interview we've ever had." And we know that it's not hard to find a really good physics teacher. And you were under some pressure from many districts around us. And we're so happy you decided to call Byram Hills home. This is a great place to learn and grow and collaborate with others. And tonight, when you see our tenure recipients, you're going to see how special it is to be here and to feel part of our community. And even if you leave the community, if you're retiring, as our elementary principal is, or going on to a principal position, like our assistant principal is, you always have a little part of Byron in you. There's a little Byron blood that's there. So, welcome to Brittany.
Thank you.
And, oh. Someone's going to make mom cry. No, no, we finished Brittany's moment. It's your moment, Jess. That was perfect timing. So tonight, we are going to recognize and celebrate our tenure recipients. Our teachers include Mary Brady. Mary, if you could stand up. Mary is a teacher at Wampus. And Jess Shaw. An English teacher who has worked at the high school, and then HCC, and then back at the high school. And our administrators receiving tenure tonight include our director of athletics, Rob Castagno. And Deepak Marwa, our director of athletics. And they are both directors of very extensive K-12 programs. It's not just programs in school, it's programs outside of school. And you are what gives us the community feel to Byram Hills. So we appreciate all that. Also present tonight is Jill Boynton. Where are you, Jill? Jill was tenured in February. We summoned her back for a photo opportunity with her tenure class. So we're happy to have you here and supporting us. So what does tenure mean? This, Jess, really is for your children, because they're the only ones that might be listening, like, "What's mom getting?" Tenure means a commitment. And through extensive observations and extensive collaborations, the district feels confident not only in what you've done, but what we think you will continue to do for the children of Byram Hills. Each one of you is exemplified, for me, how collaboration with colleagues supports our kids. Mary, you began your career as a reading teacher, and you're now in a special class, which requires you to primarily be in charge of ELA and math for one group of students, and do a pull-out program for some other students. Then you support general education classes with two different teachers in science and social studies. It was about changing to fit the needs of the school and the needs of the students, and that requires a commitment and collaboration. You had to work closely with so many teachers, and you've really done well, Mary. Jess, you began, as I said, as a high school teacher, then you were transferred to Crittenden, where you worked on a team. Then you returned to the high school when we had staffing reductions. And each time, not only have you collaborated with colleagues, but you've been that teacher that students seek out. They tell us time and time again that they want you. Having observed your classes, I know what they are thinking, and I know it's because you can reach students at all different levels and with all different passions. And that's very special. You're also a phenomenal basketball player of the Wizards. She was one of my co-pilots at the Wizards. And you exemplify teamwork, which is...
I can't think of a better basis for tenure than that.
That is great. That has to go far.
Got to have a strong team.
I think that's why I still have my job. So thank you, Jess. And Deepak, your need for collaboration runs K-12, right? Both in and out of school for arts and music. And you're leading them as a director, you're leading teachers, you're leading programs. But I think collaboration for you has really meant listening to your teachers and responding to them in an effort to support really cohesive Department of Professionals. And to that, you've been very successful. And when you've wondered how to meet people's needs, you've talked to your colleagues. And you've said, "What am I doing? This is my approach. How can I refine this? How can I make it better? How can I develop this team that I'm working with?" And that's so important. Each time, your results are just outstanding. And Byram Hills has become a school to watch and model because of fine arts. Thank you, Deepak. And Rob, last but not least. I'm proud to say that as the athletic director, you have successfully recruited your own team, and I'm on it. Good or bad for you, but I think it's good. You're here tonight. Throughout this year in particular, you've made great changes to the physical education, health, and athletics for students. You had a vision, but you understood that you needed partnerships with that vision. And that has been the focal point of your success. I think your collaboration has resulted in the pilot of a few new sports programs for kids. And you're not afraid to say, "We tried and it didn't work, and we'll keep trying," so we're meeting the needs of our students. And you were instrumental in this new policy on this athletic placement process and presenting the board with real information with the principal at the middle school and the high school that could help them to make this possible. I trust that your partnerships, your teamwork, and your deliberate approaches are going to continue throughout your years in Byram Hills. And we're really glad that you're here. For the four of you, just a little closing. I think that every successful Byram Hills teacher or administrator looks through that process of reflection, refinement, and revising. That is what we're doing every day and what we continue to do. And just from my perspective and vantage point, having been here when all of you were hired in my former role, and having been in all of your classes and observed you, I see reflecting, refining, and revising as you're moving forward. And that's going to be a hallmark to your success here and just benefiting our children for a long time. I'm glad to see you here on the beginning of a long journey for all of us. Thank you. You can see how special you all are here by how many people are here, your friends, your family, your colleagues. We are appreciative, too, that you decided to make Byram Hills your home. Because we know this is not necessarily always the easiest place to work, but we understand that it is rewarding, right?
Brittany, that doesn't apply to you. It's going to be very easy for you.
What I'm saying, I'm just saying that we push for excellence. I don't mean that... I just mean that, you know, we all push for excellence, everybody in our community, the board, and all of you as well. So we are proud to have you as part of our district. You are the leaders of our district, and we are excited to see what you're going to do for the next number of years.
I came on the board when most of you were in high school, so I really could track you very closely. But I just want to take a moment to speak to Deepak and Rob with no slight to Mary and Jessica, whose tenure is greatly deserved, and we are thrilled for you. But Deepak, I shouldn't say but, and Deepak and Rob came in really replacing, I don't want to say legends, but people who have made enormous statements here in the Byram Hills community. And Deepak, I think your performance has just been spectacular. Really well. What you've done in the last couple of years here has exceeded everybody's wildest expectation. You haven't always put on the shows I'd want to. And we'll discuss that again next year.
He's really making a pitch for it now.
Yeah. But really, you have such a vital role, and the interactions that your department and you have with the students lingers long, long after the students have left Byram Hills. So a personal congratulations to you. It really is a terrific accomplishment. And just if I can talk to you for a minute, Rob. I remember about three and a half years ago, going to a live basketball game with my Byram Hills scarf on, and pulling you aside, "Can I talk to you for a minute?" Saying, "There might be a place you really would like to work." Your... And then you said, "Harrison?" I go, "No, no." The athletic program here is cherished. It really is. It's cherished by the board, it's cherished by the kids, it's cherished by the parents. And you've been more than just a custodian, you've been a leader of this program. And we know that leading athletic program isn't simply measured by wins and losses, far from it. It's really measured by the character that we give the student athletes that we have at Byram Hills. And that, to me, is really the measuring stick, and you've succeeded tremendously. So for the two district-wide tenure candidates, we wish you a very, very long, happy hit at Byram Hills. Your work has just been terrific. And please keep it going, because it is such a valuable part of what we call the Byram Hills culture. So congratulations to both of you.
Well, I think we'll take a two-minute break, and we can say our congratulations, and we can pick up our meeting. And your children could get snacks in the back. Curious. We are, we're on to unfinished business, and we have a bunch of policies, but we're going to take these separately, so we can talk about them separately. So can I have a motion to approve as a third read policy, 6240, which is investments?
So moved. Second.
So, third read, some good additions.
The investments policy. So, yeah, there's some changes to this. We went back to the policy committee, we've been looking at it for a long time. We had NILAP come and speak with us. And so I thank Scott for crushing the party, and Rob, and for crushing the party of the policy committee and helping us think through these. You'll see the recent changes from our second read, so we're looking at the, in the third read. We put in some information under item E, under direct or cooperative investments, about creditworthiness, strength of financial institutions. And we added some information there to be specific about the type of institutions that we would allow for to be creditworthy, that we define that in the policy. And it was a recommendation from the policy committee. And there was the very last item, item eight, under F, was another item that we added.
Well, that was a good idea.
Decide your own.
That's a good add.
Yeah. Thanks a lot, Scott.
That was a recipe to go out. Good add.
There's no reason to. Would anyone like to add any information about this?
Yeah, and I think the thing that I would say, it was helpful to meet the NILAP rep.
Yeah.
Because unpacking that and really understanding the underlying counterparty risk and where the money actually sits was helpful and made us feel a lot more comfortable than before we had anything.
She had some questions about it. You were unsure about this, and that he really helped.
The big nuance is that it's a separately managed account. We own the underlying securities, and it's not pool, and it's more customized.
Right, so our money is sitting in a Byram Hills separately managed account rather. Commingled.
And it seems like everything that was discussed during that policy meeting got captured here. Would you guys agree?
Yeah, I think we possibly cleaned it up. There was a number of items in here which were not even applicable to how we administer funds or anything like that. It's a bit more streamlined and more consistent with actually what we're doing versus broad-based policy.
Exactly. There was a clause where reserve funds can be invested in obligations of the district, but that just didn't make sense to us. We took it out. There are a number of things that we removed just to really focus it. And then we also spoke about collateralization with NILAP and how that works. So, yeah.
I think we took time on this, we went really deep with it. I thank the policy committee, I thank Scott for joining us, and also Susan and Jen were really helpful providing the information. So thank you as well.
It was good, and thank you for having them join as well and answer all the questions. All right, anybody else have any comments on this? All in favor?
Scott, thank you very much for being able to...
My pleasure.
Well done.
Okay. And that brings us to second read policy, 7500. Can I have a motion to approve as a second read, policy 7500, which is naming facilities, funds, and events?
Second.
Okay. Now, this one had a lot of changes in the policy committee again.
Sure.
So I have a feeling this is going to be a good discussion.
Right. So we, again, we're taking our time with this, so we wanted to bring it back to the policy committee based on the last meeting's discussion. One major change, we had a lot of discussion about the use of accepting the most unusual circumstances. So the policy committee came up with some other wording, and that, you can see that revised wording, and I'll read it for you. "They," meaning entire buildings or parts of buildings, "may not ordinarily be named for individuals unless exceptional achievement and/or contribution to the district can be established using a comprehensive vetting process outlined by the district. The superintendent will provide a report to the board on the findings of the vetting process." Also attached, a draft vetting process that Jen and I came up with based on input from the policy committee.
Can I offer one slight change? Just for clarity, unless exceptional achievement and/or contribution to the district is established, as opposed to can be established. I think is established is more precise.
And I would also, since we're on that paragraph, I think that it shouldn't just be individuals, it should also be organizations. They may not ordinarily be named for individuals or organizations. They should be part of that same vetting process, organizations. Let's just say, like, right, one of the name the...
Like the Coca-Cola gymnasium?
Or it could be...
It could be ASO.
It could be Armand Bisteau.
Yeah. I understand that.
We need the vetting process for that as well, because...
A foundation.
Yeah, yeah. That's true.
That makes sense.
I know you added that to the vetting process, too.
I did, I missed it in the policy.
Great.
And then we... Another was some discussion at the previous board meeting about the vote, and we put in this draft of the policy, an affirmation vote of at least five board education members. The policy committee felt that was discussion for the full board, it didn't want to make any decisions, but wanted to bring that discussion back to the full board.
So what do we all think about that?
I guess I could start, just because I was a hero last time. I could give my two cents, although I do understand the rationale for this, because I do think that this is something that needs to have a very high bar, and needs to be thought through very carefully. I would come out, though, on the side of having it be like any other vote, and letting the vetting process be thorough, and the discussion be thorough, only because I feel like, you know, a $90-plus million budget is a serious decision, and hiring a superintendent is a serious decision. And I'm not sure I would put this in a different spot than that personally, but I do understand the intent behind it, so I'm over to it.
We had a good discussion about this, and we don't really need your input on this. Your point, it's, you know, I understand it. It's clearly, you know, you can, yeah, it's hard to argue with the fact that, hey, the budget's a great example. The reason I think it is appropriate is I want to keep something like this from happening on a wave of emotion, on a wave of just a couple people get together, let's do this, without really... And no matter what the vetting process is, four members of the board can pretty much do what they want, they can ignore the vetting process. Well, it's good enough for us, we want to name this building after so-and-so. And I'm just nervous about something like that. And I think five is really a good dissuader from a vocal majority of a board that says, you know, "We want to do this," because once it's done, it can't be undone. Once you name a building after Mr. Whomever or Ms. Whomever or whatever, it's there.
And once you do it once.
And once you do it once, that's it. So, I mean, you have a chance, you know, a budget is every year, a superintendent, hopefully now won't be for quite some time. But I am, I really, I guess it's just my years here, so, you know, I just think four votes isn't enough, given the permanence of what this is, and to really dissuade a vocal small majority, but not five members doing it. That's all. I mean, it's, that really is my take on it. I understand yours, but I like the protection that this gives us on something that I think is so... It makes a statement to the community forever when we do something like this. Forever. And can't be undone. So I think the high bar here is appropriate.
I mean, technically, you could take the name down, right? I'm just saying, you know, not that you want the significance of the thought process, so I understand and I agree, the five members, I'm in agreement on that. All I'm saying is, things can be undone.
It's not, it's not easy.
It's not a irrevocable decision.
No, it's not, it can be, but it doesn't reflect well on the board.
I get it, I'm just saying it's...
Doesn't reflect, wouldn't reflect well on the board.
We also have in there that it's, the entire board has to be present, so...
That's important.
I think that's important, too. And I don't think, there's never a situation where a naming is so critical that we can't wait to have an entire board.
That's right.
And if we can't get an entire board at a meeting, then we've got more problems than that.
Exactly.
So, okay. I mean, I, you know, personally, I totally hear what you're saying about the five, and I get it, and I would be okay with that, but I do feel that vote should be what the votes are, and I don't think there should be any kind of supermajority, but I'm not, you know, I'm not dug into the ground on that one. Any other thoughts? All right, so we're keeping it the five-two, and it's a full board, right?
Full board.
All right, and let's see, what else do we have here with that?
Yeah, the other piece at the end, which we revise, is moving it from the district to the board under naming of funds and events that the board may approve.
I like that. I think that was, that's good.
After an individual organization.
I think that's where our attention is going to be more focused, probably.
And by saying it that way, the board may approve the naming. It's not that we're coming up and saying, "We want to have a scholarship." We're just, things will come to us, and we're approving them, right? Is that the thought?
And just to be clear, and I think this is clear, but just to make sure it is, that we're not intending to vet the recipient of the scholarship. It's that if the scholarship is named after an organization or person...
Exactly. Agreed, agreed.
That's a whole other...
So, we've come a long way on this policy. Like, the thing that I am comfortable with is I think it's very clear now. Where before, obviously, we had a lot of wiggle room in it, there were things that we weren't sure about.
Right, we include the vetting process for your review, just so that there is a process behind, we refer to the vetting process.
Did it say draft of the vetting process?
Yes.
So the vetting process would not be, that's a process, it's not a policy. It's not going to be attached to the policy outline, is it?
Right, so we have an option. So by leaving the policy as is, that would be up to superintendent, sitting superintendent, to determine whatever process they want. If you would like to make this a regulation behind this process, we could do that, and therefore it is part of policy and would need board approval to change. So the vetting process could be a regulation. I think you have that option if you want that type of control.
A question I have, and I really, I don't know where it comes down from, is when we tell the superintendent, "Go vet," and we give the superintendent five ways to vet, but do we want to put anything here that the superintendent, is the superintendent encouraged? Because a lot of this vetting can be done, the superintendent, "Why, I did it." But do we want to encourage the superintendent to, you know, obtain the views from, you know, other, from out from third parties, people who were active in the district when this person was doing it? Or is the superintendent limited to just what the paper record is and what the superintendent, you know...
Well, there was something in the vetting process that had other information. I forgot how it was, the last bullet of it.
It says, "Conducted as warranted by the information gathered during the process."
Right. I think that covers it.
As warranted. I mean, I would like, frankly, I would like to know on something like this, why other increase would not be warranted? If we, you know, if we say, "We want to name whatever after Mr. or Ms. Jones," I think the superintendent, I think the superintendent should at least, it says, "Review his or her findings." I don't want to overly complicate this either.
Your concern is that there's skeletons in the closet somewhere that would come up after the naming?
Well, yeah, I mean, for example, for example. We decide to name the, what sport don't we have? Gymnastics. We decide to name the gymnastics, oh, that's a bad example. Sorry. We decide to, we decide to name the Byram Hills Polo Club after longtime polo coach, John Jones. Do we want to encourage the superintendent to go out and speak to people, say, "Yeah, what's out there? Would that be part of your vetting? What's out there? Would we knowingly want to name..."
I think we, I mean, I think that five covers that if it's needed, because what if...
Item four as well. Item four may determine any benefit to the current student body and their community.
I mean, my inclination is to leave it and rely on the judgment of the superintendent. And when the superintendent comes back and says, "Here's my refinings," we can then ask questions, saying, "Well, did you do this, that, or the other thing?"
Absolutely.
Please, go back. Well, I'm fine.
I think it does, yeah.
I think it's good, I just...
Number two as well, you can argue that you might need to make some calls to the review.
I don't know how the superintendent, "Oh, here's a question. Here's a question, which we didn't think about." And maybe, maybe it should go into the policy, I hate to say this, but, hold on. Do we want to put some timeframe? In other words, no facility would be named for someone, at least that the person has no, has been not connected with Byram Hills for a minimum of X years?
I don't think we should do that.
No.
I don't think so, because, you know, we don't know the circumstances of what any of this will be, right? I think we should keep that open-ended. It's still ultimately going to be up to the board to decide, even after we get all the vetting, it doesn't mean we have to allow...
Let me put it this way. Just as an example, the baseball Hall of Fame says, "You can't get in unless you're 10 years, you're out of the game 10 years. Absent, death," or something like that, really. Hockey Hall of Fame, five years. Other sports. I don't know. It seems that by putting a timeframe in it, it takes a rush to judgment away that could lead to a mistake, even inadvertently.
I already dealt with this.
I'm not selling it, I'm just, I'm not selling it, I'm just talking about it.
I'm just saying Mike, Scott, Larry, and I dealt with this on the foundation. And Deborah Leepen-Yell was an integral part of the foundation, and when she passed away,
Leepen-Yell was an integral part of the foundation, and when she passed away, we felt to honor her, we wanted to name.
Passed away, and it was, I get it.
And it was, it was almost, you're right.
It's different than naming a facility.
Right, but what if, you've got a child who dies from cancer, the parents want to start a scholarship in their name.
I'm limiting this to the facility.
Just the facility, it's okay. I apologize, I.
No, that's okay, the naming funds and events, I don't know.
I feel like the vetting is more, like, the criteria is the most important. If something can't be properly vetted, then that's a different, that's a different story.
I'm raising it, I don't think I'm wedded to it, but I don't know what your thoughts are, that's all.
So, right, and the vetting process really says that this is a vetting process for naming a facility, it doesn't say anything about naming events.
Right, well, yeah, for naming facilities, funds and events.
Yes, it does, naming facilities, funds and events.
Well, in the title it does, but it says, upon receiving a request to name a facility, the board will direct the superintendent to conduct a review and it will be the following vetting process.
Well, I think funds and event should be included in that.
Well, yeah, this, the vetting, they're just saying that it's for Policy 7500 and that's the name of it. Did, so for the publics, you know, who's watching this, is this vetting process, was it on our agenda or not? Should I read it just, so anyone listening home could hear?
It's in the agenda.
But it was in ours, I don't know if it was there for public?
It's, well, it's a link from the main, it's not there?
I mean, it might have been just for us, I don't know if it was just on ours or if it was the public one, it might have been. Let me do, it's not, there's five, there's five of them, so I'm just, okay. But here's the paragraph beforehand, upon receiving a request to name a facility after an individual or organization, the Board of Education will direct the superintendent to conduct a review. The superintendent will conduct a vetting process that may include the following, number one, review the personnel file of the individual or organization if he or she was a district employee. Number two, review the impact that that individual or organization has had on this student body, the district, the community, and/or greater society. Three, review the relevance of the individual or organization's contributions to our current students and/or community. Four, determine any benefit to the current student body and/or community to name the facility after the individual or organization. And five, conduct other inquiries as warranted by the information gathered during the process.
Yeah. I mean, this vetting process can always revisit it if necessary.
Yeah.
I'm tempted to leave it alone.
It might be, a good recommendation is to bring it back to the policy committee, look over, come in.
I think we have to refine it.
Look over the vetting process, yeah, and come back to the board.
The vetting process, yep, that won't be part of us approving necessarily the policy, because this is a process. I heard what you were saying, and my opinion is, I'd like to hear everybody else's, is that we don't put it as part of the regulation, we do it like the way we always do our policies, our procedures as.
Separate.
That's my thought.
That makes sense to me.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I do think for, the way it is, I think from the standpoint is okay, but when you think about a fund, if a family, let's say, wants to name a scholarship fund after someone who is deceased or someone they want to honor, you don't necessarily have to have all these criteria met, meaning they don't have to have the impact on the district, right? So, I think I like the way this is set up.
Me too, I too, with that opening paragraph saying that it's for specifically facilities.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I think we can work with this, I really do.
I think the policy is well-written.
I like the policy, I think it's.
Yeah, I think it takes away a lot of the room for interpretation that we had before.
So, the only, you know, the part will be, which I guess we'll have to figure out how we always do business, but, you know, with the vetting process, there is a component where you go look at somebody's past files, there's FERPA rules and that too, I don't know how the discussion goes in public.
It doesn't.
It's, it's going to be a bit of a challenge as we get these things, but I guess we'll take them as they come.
I think, I could think of one change though, if you don't mind. I'm looking at 7500 and the, it will be established in that first paragraph, contribution to the district can be established using a comprehensive vetting process outlined by the district. So, I kind of feel it should be outlined by the Board of Education and the district, because otherwise, I'm actually creating this vetting process.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, it gives the board the inclusion in what that process is.
Sure.
Then we don't need it as a regulation.
But then it says, you will provide a report to the board.
Right, but we'll do the vetting process together of what it is, and then I will provide findings.
Outlined by the board and the superintendent.
Yes, that's, yes, otherwise, otherwise, the board then sort of is.
Otherwise, the superintendent.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
That makes sense.
So, would the discussion take place in public?
We would, we would have to have a discussion in public, we wouldn't be able to talk about personnel matters in public. So, it'll be, you know, we'll have to navigate that.
If there's stuff that's information that we're getting from their file, that's.
We can't, we can't.
That's for certain.
I don't know, we're going to have to navigate this as we do it, it's going to be, it might be challenging, but we're going to.
We may not be doing it as often as you think.
That's true, that's true. Okay. I don't know, we're.
It's great work on this, Tim.
Yeah, oh my gosh.
Yeah, nicely done.
Yeah, thanks for your.
This is not easy. So, it sounds like we don't have changes.
On what?
Just the additions.
On, on the, well, right, what Jen said.
And it was the one, the change that.
And I have a change, changing that to is as opposed to whatever.
That's right, okay.
Changes, put in individuals or organizations in the vetting process, outlined by the Board of Education.
But they're pretty simple changes, it sounds like we can.
My one little change.
But I don't, does this need to come back to be read again?
They're not content change, they're.
Exactly.
This was a first read.
Exactly, right? Okay, okay. So, with those changes, all in favor?
First read?
No, this is a second read.
Second read. Okay, let's go.
That is, I have to say, pretty amazing that we got that in two reads.
In for a penny.
Okay. So, to those who are watching up, that are very eager about the naming policy, we will get back to you and let you know when it's going to be on the agenda for your request, specifically the theater I'm talking about.
And the policy committee will go over that vetting process and bring it back to your board.
Yes, yes, okay. Yes, I guess that has to happen first, right? Okay, great, all right, now, one more policy, can I have a motion as a first read to approve policy 5151, homeless children?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
So, this is another policy of many that are impacted by this federal legislation called the McKinney-Vento Act regarding homeless children. And this policy was updated not long ago, in 2015, Jen looked on it and revised it, but NISBA recommended some changes to add some clarity, specifically regarding of where a homeless child resides. So, you see these four points put on there, and if you look at the track changes version, that's replacing the paragraph that's Xed out underneath that, that outlines more specifically the school of origin and defines that clearly for, in this policy, to make it clear. There's a few other small changes in there, but they're all pretty solid, I believe. I think all this is straightforward. The overall purpose of the policy is being clarified is to remove as many barriers as possible for homeless children. And that's what the intent of these changes are doing. That's it, I think it's a pretty straightforward policy in the policy committee. Thank you for your work, but do they support the changes in this?
Are they coming up? All in favor?
Good work on that.
Wow, yeah.
Thank you.
That one was easier. Brings us to new business, site-based year-end report.
We do.
Another great year in site-based STEAM. So, the district-wide, we've been focused on two main things, one is looking at leadership and the second, looking at our lifelong learner standards and working on revising those, so I brought that to the site-based team. We were snowed out of our second meeting, so we didn't get as much work done as we wanted to, so I'll pick up the work next year with that type of work. Lots of snow days this year, but we have been working on leadership. And in the school-based reports, I just want to point out two things, I'm at the middle school and high school, because both principals, Kim Lappel and Chris Walsh, have been working together very closely and both working on the impact of the challenge success results, and that was a big part of their site-based work. They're working on that through their site-based teams, and I know the board had brought up previously that they wanted, really concerning the role of parents coming into the, into play when we're looking at the challenge success work, looking at what we're doing to reduce stress and anxiety with students, and both Kim and Chris have involved parents in both in their work in the site-based teams, working on the challenge success results and continuing that work next year. So, both will be continuing that. Kim has done some really terrific work, as you know, she created an essential question with her super team around the balance between healthy mindset sets, but maintaining a rigorous academic environment, and that's been a real yin yang, starting in middle schools through the high school. The challenge success has been really good work for her to be exploring the impact on kids and bringing that to the faculty, so it was really some eye-opening insight for faculty. And also the work she's doing through SAIL, which is sort of a new acronym for student government, students acting in leadership, really remarkable work there, where Kim has been empowering kids to make decisions, to be involved in the school. And you really feel and see a difference when you're in the middle school, you see it in the cafeteria, which the long battle over the seating in the cafeteria, Kim took that on this year, let SAIL do some changes. And whenever I'm at the middle school, I go to the cafeteria during lunch and I ask kids who are sitting at the tall tables and ask them about the cafeteria.
The curfeteria.
The curfeteria.
Curfeteria, right.
They love the seating, they, you know, you just see kids spread out over that, some sitting at the high tables, some cramming 12 kids around the seats now. One kid told me that 12 was the new eight, according to how many people you could fit around the table, which, I'm guessing we're going to want bigger tables eventually for some of those groups, but they really are happy with that environment, and that was really came from the kids. And Kim allowed it to happen.
It's a really nice environment.
It's pretty amazing, I remember years and years, parents complained about those tables and it just never got changed, but the kids actually are the ones that brought that change.
Yes, and there's been other changes.
Really get the request at the VHF to fund new tables.
Yeah, so now, if you're listening out there, if you want change, get your kids, you know, motivated to do it.
That's great.
I was going to ask a question, but I think you answered it already, which is, do you see continued value in the site-based teams?
Absolutely.
I mean, I think we're maybe, maybe three or four of the districts in the state knew them, but we've been a pretty dedicated participant in site-based, so.
Yeah, so the building level meetings have been really great, meeting, you know, letting, giving them direction from the district, focusing on our major goals and priorities and the board goals, it's been a real help. The district-wide meetings, I think, we eventually, I find the most valuable ones is around curriculum, when we have new curriculum and doing special meetings, that's when we have the biggest attendance and the most involvement, but overall, the, you know, site-based has been a good tool for us to keep focusing on some priorities.
Originally, it was required, right? It was a law that we had to have community members involved.
I think Harry Edwards or something, who was, who was the regent who was a big proponent of site-based?
But it's not anymore, it's not required, will we just continue it? Is that the case?
I'm a proud alumni of the 1997 Byram Hills.
Still under shared decision-making, so it's, the language has changed a bit, but there's still, you need to have a form to include parents in decision-making of the district.
So, that's our form.
Specifically, site-based has sort of been dropped from the language.
Okay.
And just point out from the high school, because Chris has worked on this through his site-based team as well, but talking about global scholars and the global scholars program being one of his main focuses, we're in year two, we'll be starting year two of the global scholars program next year, year one being very successful, there were 101 course requests for global scholars this year, which is really phenomenal, so.
That's amazing.
The interest did not die down, it's actually increasing, there's still a lot of students interested in that program. I've been supporting Melissa Stahl, Dwayne Smith, and Jen Layden, who are working together, they're bringing a teacher, a classroom teacher into it next year, who will be working with them, so we can start bringing teaching faculty into it as well, and I'm always providing them with opportunities and time to think about it. So, they're doing the curriculum work this summer, and we'll continue to monitor how that program goes. We're very excited about the work.
Pretty incredible for a first year for that program, well-oiled machine.
It wasn't going to fail with three really amazing educators behind it, they were really, they put a lot of time into it, we've made some good contacts. I went to a national conference earlier this spring and talked with someone from an organization, the Asia Society, who we initially had contacted previously, and I went to a workshop of this woman who oversees the education part, and I introduced myself, and she told me that she actually cites up our work and a lot of the work she does, and she's been a tool that we went to, and she's now using us as an example of work being seen in practice.
So, is this, that program is pretty cutting edge, it just sounds like that particular, especially we're doing it, we're not really modeling it after anybody else, we're carving the way.
No, there are some models through the Asia Society, they have a sort of a group of schools, a consortium of schools, and we're making contacts with those folks and hopefully can start networking with them in the future. We use a lot of their materials as well as other frameworks and organizations, but there's not a lot of districts doing this type of work. People talk about it.
And to observe those classes, they're unlike anything you've ever seen.
They really are. It's been, they're really active, they're not traditional, you're not lecturing the kids, they're doing the work.
And it's more opportunities for these kids to be leaders in multi-facets.
Yep, it's great.
So, I'm going to thank Chris for leading that work.
Yes, congratulations to the site-based.
Oh, okay.
Really, very good, I'm impressed with that.
Thank you.
That was great, Tim. Was there a recording in your work? Getting attacked by bugs.
Some visitors from the outside.
Do they want to speak?
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
That brings us to staff reports, and I turn it back to Dr. Lamia.
Okay. Weird.
Dr. Lamia.
I don't know if that works. All right, so I'll start tonight with board goals to date, and then I have a couple of items of important news to share, and then, of course, my student highlights. For board goals, we had five weighty goals this year, and the question was, could the board actually attend to each one of those goals? They had multiple layers underneath each goal, and I have to say that I think that the board accomplished that very well. So, our first goal was excellence in teaching and learning, and in addition to these teaching practices and excellence, we were really looking, the board was looking to support the shift, this lifelong learner shift, standards to 21st century skills, and at the midpoint of the year, I outlined for the board a few ways that we did that, there were some subheadings under that. So, for STEAM, prior to December, the board had already adopted all of these new STEAM electives at the high school, multiple electives, and we had Lisa Pellegrino, Deb Kane, Andrew Taylor here to discuss progress towards STEAM. I was at faculty meetings at each building to articulate the STEAM curriculum integration. Tim discussed STEAM offerings at the high school for robotics, we had some new courses, robotics two, robot master, movie making and media, film induction and storytelling, and then, since then, Lisa Pellegrino came to report to us on the K-16 STEAM and college review. Remember that, we thought it was very important that somebody go out and determine, is all this work that we're doing on STEAM actually benefiting the college experience, and are we preparing our students for what they need? That was a great presentation. And in April, the PTSA working parents came to meet with me and principals, and board members were there to also talk about math initiatives. And then, exciting, for the summer, we have cyber camp workshops focused on, for teachers, on promedion boards and units of study aligned with 21st century skills, problem-based learning, student-active classroom models, and we are expecting over 100 teachers to enroll in these summer cyber camps. So, that is only one component of the board's success under excellence in teaching and learning. The next is student leadership, which I feel very passionately about. We had global competency, we had the global scholars program and the VOC Summit, Student Leadership Board, and that new grade eight capstone project this year. And prior to December, the board had made quite, had made quite progress on that, Tim reported to us about global scholars, had men conversations with Melissa, Dwayne, and Jen Layden to discuss the progress on that. and Jen Layden to discuss the progress on that. We had curriculum conversations in, remember in December with the 17 students, who were the leaders of the extracurricular groups. That was great. And then in January, I tried to capture that with a student leadership documentary that we shared with the public, highlighting a lot of our leaders, even from those little reading buddies, all the way up to our high school kids. And in April, we also focused on leadership with parents at the Working Parents Committee that the board attended, and a nice finale with the VOC Summit at the high school, where we had eight different organizations participating in the summit for positive change. We also had this capstone project in May at Crittendon, which was outstanding, and the board has a video that I've attached to your notes. Some of our students did a really great job. They tried to focus on their leadership, the capstone project. They created an app that people can use when they might have a family member in the hospital, and it's really to help them answer questions and document their medication, and really like a nice little organizational piece. I appreciate those students, and I have that link in the board docs for you. And then, what I really love for leadership is that Kim Lappel and Chris Walsh really reported their challenge-success findings to us, and we're aware of the student stress in such a high-performing district. And this attempt to identify this stress was really supported by the goal, goals of the board with leadership, supporting students as leaders, which I think has been extraordinary. And Tim and I are also considering leadership as an area of focus for our tri-states consultancy moving forward. So I think that the board's strength in this department is motivating even more thinking.
What do you mean by that?
We are evaluated by, we have tri-states evaluations every few years.
Is it our turn again?
We're considering, it's not quite our turn. We're thinking of having them come and do a consultancy with us on leadership. Where are we in this leadership process without doing a tri-states visit?
So as part of being members of the tri-state consortium, every four or five years, they ask you to do a visit where you evaluate some aspect of your program. So the last one, we just did it, were languages. Before that, we've done English Language Arts, we've done mathematics, we've done, what else did we do? I think that was, we did do social studies at one point.
I think Joy did it, too.
Yeah, and we did one in music. So we are up for another evaluation, so we start to look for areas where we want to get some critical friends feedback. So it's really a critical friends model. You bring in others from member districts to come and look at some aspect of your program, and you define an essential question, and we have some benchmarks that we use to create a benchmarking system for ourselves. It's a great process.
It's a good chance for us to examine, where are we in this leadership piece?
So as we started, trying to help us really make sure that we started in an authentic and appropriate way.
Oh, okay.
It's a different type of consultancy model instead of a typical evaluation.
I got to imagine that one's got to be a little more challenging, because it's really permeating about an entire district.
Yeah, so having lots of conversations with the tri-state about how we would go about it before committing to here, it goes a little scary, but it's okay, we'll do it. Bringing some good thinkers around.
Yeah. Also, in excellence in teaching and learning, we know that Tim developed our professional development plan. He revised our professional development policy, and the board adopted that. Also, still, under teaching and learning, the district-wide data team. We created the district-wide data team this year and explored the data dashboard. And just the last time that you had somebody, Andrew Taylor, visiting here, and we were talking about different options, and as you know, we've settled on a data dashboard. And this is from Alpine Achievement Systems, and it's, we think it's customizable to what our district needs, we're excited about it. But the board was really instrumental in inquiring what we wanted in that dashboard, and that made us very discerning in the purchasing process, in the selection process. Remember, we had 15 dashboards when we started, and we narrowed it down to seven, and then narrowed it down to one. So a lot of work was done by our district and the board on that. And we're also really aware of New York State Ed, considering statewide data dashboards, what is that going to mean for our dashboard moving forward? So we're keeping an eye on that constantly. So quite a lot of success, and that's only in one of the goals, in excellence in teaching and learning. The next one, negotiations with the BHTA and the CSCA. We are in the midst of a fair, equitable, and financially responsible contracts with them. We are happy to say that we are progressing in our process, and we should have something to bring to the board at our next meeting, as I discussed. But we're very happy with the communications with the board, and the board has been instrumental in asking questions and guiding our negotiations process. So another success. Fiscal accountability and communications. The first bullet we had under that was the budget study, where we were looking at budget projections and future capital needs and changing needs. I think that helped us, when we were looking at budget and capital, we're starting to really look at how pilots are affecting our budgets moving forward. We're looking at enrollment. We've done an enrollment study to see these trends and how they're going to affect the budget. I've given the demographers report. We've looked at a few per pupil cost studies, and the board's eye is still very focused on per pupil costs, as we should be. The athletic facilities review, I thought was quite successful. Steve came in December and gave us a preliminary view of what his thoughts were, but when we met with the engineers, we got a better sense of where we need to be moving with our fields in the future, and quite a bit of validation for the big project that we're undertaking next summer. And that was fiscal accountability. Now, leadership development and succession planning, supporting new and transitioning administrators. So this is where, you know, we, quite a bit has happened this year. We did get to a, and I'm going to basically talk from the mid-year, but we have started to look at consultancy processes regarding leadership and executive coaching. We identified a program at Manhattanville College that we've spoken to some teachers about pursuing administration, so we're looking at that succession planning. Jen Layden and Tim taught a session at Putnam, Northern Westchester Bowses for teacher leaders as part of a four-day series, and that is always good for us to be networking and that kind of thinking. As for my leadership development, the board was instrumental in supporting our relationships with the town supervisor, PTSA, BHF, Westchester-Putnam School Boards, particularly Scott, your role on West Putt this year was really great for us, and the Soundshire Consortium, the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, and most recently, my role now with Northern Westchester Hospital and the President's Council. So I think the board has really been supportive of that leadership. You supported me in leadership development. We worked on hefty items this year, policy, particularly athletic placement process, security planning, the new proposition for the field, leadership transitions, partnerships with Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, Michigan, and Stanford. And the board is really committing to help leaders support our children. So another leadership development and succession planning. And I think the board worked on its own leadership development this year. We revised the board committees. We've committed to defining the role of the committees in our retreat next year, and the board supported three administrators for tenure this year. So it's quite a bit under leadership development and succession planning. It's a long report, right? But, but a lot of work.
Oh, my gosh, I mean, we can all take vacation next year.
You can take a vacation. I don't know if the vacation, I don't even know what that means. Educational reform and advocacy for the last one. And this is the, this is the one item that kind of came back on at the end. I don't know if you remember, we had four goals, and we said we can't keep our eye off of advocacy. And we did quite a bit this year. We've really constantly been remaining informed about new regulations, especially regarding displaced students. The board has been knowledgeable about changes in state testing, the impact it's had on our students this year. We remained informed about the impact of new tax laws on the community, Lower Hudson Council efficacy efforts to propose a TRS reserve, which we're behind, preserve foundation aid formula, improve APPR. I updated the board on the Lower Hudson Education Coalition's strategic plan for coalition building and legislative priorities. Tim has discussed ESSA accountability and test refusals. I've met with Congresswoman Nita Lowey regarding tax reform implications for middle-income taxpayers. And Friday, we are going to a meeting in White Plains, and we're going to be really exploring whether we could have charitable contributions as part of this tax movement moving forward, which we're hearing no, but we know that we need to explore this deeply, and we need to be ready for our community if there's a point that we can do that.
And we have you and our business official.
Our business officials are going, and we have quite a few officials from the town are going as well, so.
Give them hell, Susan.
Sure. And that is the end of my report on board goals, which I think were extraordinary and quite a bit.
That was really detailed, Jim, thank you for it.
Quite a bit. And I also have some important news. First of all, I want to thank the community for supporting our budget.
Have we been back since?
I don't think we've been back.
That's right.
Because it's a long ago. Yes, so thank you to our community. And we're just excited. It means that we can continue to provide incredible experiences for the children that are here. And Byram Hills School District is such a big part of this community that even if you don't have children in the schools, we hope that you do feel a part of our school community and are grateful for your vote. We had a budget video, Robyn and I had 407 hits on our video this year, and last year there were 225.
Because they're hot stars.
Wow! I don't know, it was like half, it was half the length. We might be on bloopers. But anyway, I hope that means that people were informed voters, and that's what matters to us. And as I said, circumventing the tax law, we will be going on Friday.
Legally.
Yes, legally, legally. Which doesn't sound, that's like an oxymoron, right? Protecting our schools' legislation, I think the public should know about, the Senate did pass protecting our schools' legislation, and the Lower Hudson Education Coalition has determined that we really need to take a very close look at that legislation before we start asking districts to do propositions, resolutions, because there are some hidden implications in there for us that we need to be very aware of. But I am at least happy that there is a focus on providing schools potentially with some support for our school protection. And last but not least, my student recognition. I told you about the Innovation Expo that took place a few weeks ago, and I do have to give a little shout-out to my three friends, Sarah Karloff, Alana Forman, and Natasha Harwitz, who you will see in the attached video that I gave you. They were very excited to share their presentation with the Board of Education. I know, so I think it's great with their conceptualized app. So thank you.
That's pretty amazing.
Northern Westchester Hospital President's Council, I told you I was asked to join, and there are a few students, they were working on a project this year called Healthy Relationships. We had three students from Byram Hills, unbeknownst to me, prior to this year, who were actually on that council. And the students have been working on this Healthy Relationships project. I am meeting with the students on the project for next year, and we're going to start having a little bit more collaboration with them. I think it is a great venue for our kids to be involved in the medical field, so I'm excited for that partnership. And the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents, Chris Walsh, Robyn Glatt and I attended a Scholastic Achievement Award Dinner, and Jackson Dietlswig and Ally Bracato were recognized, and Ally was a recipient of a $4,000 scholarship. I already told you about our VOC Summit, that was very exciting. Oh, we have some congratulations to our first-year science research students. We always hear about our seniors and the accolades, but the six sophomores who completed this Saturday, competed this Saturday at the Second Annual Somers Science Fair. Second place in behavioral science was Carolina Pedraza, you know her from Student Leadership Board. Third place for behavioral science was Talen Postian, and second place for engineering, Thomas Gomez. So nice work, thank you to Stephanie Greenwald and Dr. Matthew. And we also had Arjun Goyle, who presented his work at the 56th National Science Humanity Symposium, and he came in second place for his research.
Fantastic.
It's incredible. Thank goodness, we had a wonderful and rather uneventful senior prom, and that is attributed to some really great student seniors this year. So thank you to that, and I hope they enjoy it. We also had our Varley players do their Neil Simon Festival. So congratulations to our performers who performed in The Odd Couple and Rumors. And our Byram Hills PTSA Scholarship Award winners, Ariel Zaccanino, Jamie Roche, and Benjamin Matso. And last but not least, we hope everybody comes out tomorrow for science research. Tomorrow night is the symposium, June 6th, and what time, I don't know what time it starts.
Seven?
Seven.
With the high school.
So I think that's, I think that's all our children have done over the past two weeks.
That's amazing, right? It was only.
It's amazing, yes. I love it. It's the best part of the journey.
And bringing that back to Tim, you're going to talk about ESSA?
Yeah, so to continue the excitement, I'm going to talk about the Every Student Succeeds Act. I think. Every student must receive an A in all courses. Yes, so this is the federal legislation, and I feel obligated to provide you with some more updated information. I attended a two-day training session provided by State Education Department. It was 157 slides long, small print, presented by Ira Schwartz, a deputy commissioner. It was incredibly detailed going through this, and I attended to a lot of it, but then a lot of it started to go, you know, a little bit over my head, but I will continue to work through it. But I feel I want to give you some updates, since I did present you with some information about it. We are starting to get more details from State Ed about the Every Student Succeeds Act, so I want you to know what the accountability requirement is going forward. And just remind our public what is ESSA. It again stands for the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is replacing the No Child Left Behind regulations. It's a federal legislation. And then every state is required to submit a plan based on how states want to implement ESSA, meeting the standards and requirements within ESSA. And so New York did submit their plan, which will be an accountability system for schools. I will say that I do think our commissioner is trying hard to be flexible and adapt. So I have some faith at the higher level that they at least have that belief. What I don't have faith in is sometimes the consequences of how they implement something, whether or not that State Ed will really listen to unintended consequences. APPR is an example where there are some unintended consequences of APPR, and they've been really, our complaints have fallen on deaf ears. I'm hoping that there will be a feedback system with ESSA, and they seem open, our commissioner seems open to feedback. I did get some business cards from other deputy commissioners at this meeting, and we'll be calling them regarding some of the assessment information. So let me just go through a few highlights. I won't get into the details of how it's all calculated, and I'll save that for next year when we actually get rated this way and try to unpack and explain some of it. But to give you some information, that this sort of the difference between our, the current system and the revised system is that there will be these non-academic indicators that will be included in the new system. So I think that's a good benchmark, as the state is trying to expand how you can hold schools accountable. I'll go through more of these details in the further slides, so I won't spend more time on that. There are these categories here on the left. These are going, sorry. There are these accountability systems here on the left. These are going to be the different categories where we will get accountability ratings. So we won't be getting one rating. Schools won't have one rating, and I think that's a nice change, is that they will be dividing accountability into a bunch of different buckets, and I think that's helpful. Each bucket is calculated differently. They're including social studies at the secondary level, which did not used to be included in the accountability measure, so that's being included. They're looking at student growth, and there's some details there I'll go through on the next slide, that's important to point out. There's going to be some new ideas in here. There's this idea that every school will have to be working toward a long-term goal, and that long-term goal is a five-year cycle. So every five years, we will get a new long-term goal to work toward, and there's going to be these measures of interim progress every year to show how, how well you're working toward that long-term goal. So you have a five-year goal, and then broken up into five.
So is it a different goal for every district based on where they are?
Exactly, yeah. And that's also a nice thing, is that you're going to look at where every district starts, what your end goal is, and calculate where your district growth should be based on the gap between where you are and where you want to be. So that's a good point. The graduation requirements are now going to be measured on four, five, and six-year cohort graduation rates, as opposed to just looking at four or five years. That was something that the state pushed the federal government to accept. Chronic absenteeism is another area that's new, that will be put in there. And then also, this college and career readiness includes a bunch of different criteria, which I'll point out in another slide. So these are some, these are these five areas we will be, have accountability ratings in. There's this composite performance index, growth, this combined composite and growth rating, which combines the other two previous rankings. There's this English proficiency, and then there's the college and career readiness. So all those will be separate accountability measures, all measured on a level from one to four, four being the highest. Some of them are normative and some are criterion reference. So normative being that you're compared to others, and you're ranked, and there's going to be a cutoff. For example, you see in this box, this is normative, there's going to be 10% of districts will rank, will rank as a level one, regardless of what the ranking is itself. And that's, they're using. And that's, they're using a normative ranking system there. That's just the state's decision to do that. We're fighting a little bit this criteria. You see that if you're between zero and 50%, you're either a level one or two. We think that half the districts are going to be level one and two and half being four and three and four. We feel like that should be a different percentage, that there should be more able to get to level three and that's feedback we're giving the state. That seems to be a very uniform feedback piece to the state. And the state is open to revising this plan, by the way. This composite index is the one that's going to include both students who were tested and students who were not tested. That's where you're going to get penalized for having students not take the state tests.
So you're saying if there's 20% of the kids in a district don't take the test, then there's a penalty that infuses into the rating system?
Exactly, yep, yep. And that was actually a requirement on ESA. You had to have 95%.
Right, because the federal government requirement of 95%.
So what I do give the state credit for is they're looking at a way to make it have a small impact. So what they're going to do is you will have a rating for just the kids who got tested. Then you're going to also do a separate calculation for the kids who, you have to include everybody. And the way it works is you, it's your denominator of your fraction that you divide by will be the minimum, it could be as 95. So if you have 94%, you still divide by 95. If you have 80% taking the test, you divide by 95. And so there's a little bit of a, you know, by getting it, that number up, it will lower that. And then those two scores are combined. So it is a more minimal impact, but they do have to include it. And I thought that was somewhat at least fair.
Jen, this is why there's a moratorium on APPR, so that you could do this.
Yeah, that's the point about APPR. So this has nothing to do with that, right? Nothing. This is school-wide rating, not teacher rating. This is, yeah, exactly. This is school accountability ratings, you know, which we're starting with No Child Left Behind, saying every school has to test students in the LA in mathematics, including three through eight. You have to test at least in science at the, one time in elementary, one in middle, and then having to have you in all the academic subjects in the high school. That's a requirement in the federal legislation. And then you have to hold schools accountable for that. There's a million other things in that criteria. Growth is another big issue where, again, they're looking at multiple years of growth in that factor and it's a real complicated formula, but again, I, you know, that one is also based on the same system that they use for teacher evaluation, a growth model, similar, and the same issues with that.
They try to control for different variables and like the impact of the classroom or of this district.
Exactly. I brought up during this presentation and had the opportunity during the question part to bring up the fact that, I appreciate that the state was trying to make some changes in this accountability and making it be more of a flexible system, but it's still built upon a system of state tests that I don't believe are valid and reliable. That's when Ira Schulman, sorry, Ira Schwartz, Deputy Commissioner, I will not equate you two, by the way, so.
Thank you.
But he can think on this very policy level, but when you get down to your specific district, he literally walks away from it. Like will just turn and walk away when I'd say, I have a teacher who, and then he just doesn't want to have it. That's when another deputy commissioner came over to talk to me and we had a long 45-minute talk during lunch about the state of the state tests and the impact on teacher evaluation to get to that eventually. And she gets it and she's trying to make inroads into the policymakers a little bit about what she calls the tails, where it doesn't work. You know, it works on this global level, but it doesn't work for extremes. She sees that in the model. She's a mathematician, statistician. So she's, she assured me that the new model will account for that. She wouldn't give me any hints.
Hopefully it's not by lots of model adjustments.
Exactly. I don't know.
That just makes the model more complicated.
No. I could go through more of this, but let me go on to just a couple more slides. There are these 10 accountability groups, so we will get, students will fall into every accountability group. A big change in ESA is the fact that you used to have, you still need to have 30 students in your N in order to get a rating for a subgroup, but now they're going to extend the N beyond just one year. So for example, for students with disabilities, it will include two years. So if your N is under 30, they will go back another year and count those students cumulatively to get an N more than 30. In this, with English language learners, they'll go back as much as four years. So we may have more students falling within the accountability than we do because of that Another interesting thing which I commend the state on doing, besides I mentioned science and social studies being added, they're now differentiating between threes and fours. Under the old system, it used to just be getting two points for getting a level three or four here. They're giving you 2.5 for level four. It's almost getting bonus points for scoring at level four, which will go into your, your goal setting, your progress. This is showing more of the details about the end goal being 200 points in your long-term and interim progress. You have to close your gap between where you are now and your end goal of 200 points by 20%. So for example, if our starting point is 100, our end goal is 200, we have a gap of 100. So over five years, we have to close that by 20%. So that would put us at having to get to 120 in five years of growth, each year being four points each year.
Is this really rigged against high-performing districts?
Yeah, although there are some ways for us to get some, accumulate that because of their, doing the bonus points on level four and things like that.
Sounds like a lottery game.
And then there's some ways of, there's a lot of factors in there that actually do help schools that are high-performing schools and I, without getting into the details of it.
So they put some thought into it anyway.
They did, yeah. And I want to see how it plays out in the year one, but I did look at some sample data. We were actually looking at real school data from last year and it does seem like we will be advantaged by some of these mechanisms they put into place, I think, as much as I can tell. They're going to identify schools in four categories. You'll either be a recognition school, that's if you're high-performing or showing rapid improvement. You will be a school in good standing and that is all schools who are in these other two, which is a targeted support and improvement or a comprehensive support and improvement. So new acronyms, a TSI and a CSI are the new schools in need of improvement or good standing or recognition school.
So five years from now.
So they're losing the term reward school and they're going to a recognition school. And the 95% participation rate, if you don't meet it for two consecutive years, you have to develop a plan if you don't show improvement to get your rating. And that will be factored in. So those are some more details without trying to get even more detailed on the 157 slides.
You could do this and stay awake as a tribute to you.
That was the top two days down there at the training.
But thank you for this.
It's important to know.
Pretty clear to you, thank you.
It's good for us to understand what it is so we not respond.
Yeah, we need to understand because the numbers are out there. And there's nothing wrong with trying to compare schools across the state, but when you think about a program like Global Scholars, they're just adding social studies now. They're just, they're always far behind the innovation. That's the reality. And so we just want to continue to have our own metrics and our own standard for excellence and focus on that and not ignore this by any stretch, but not let it govern our decision-making process.
They are doing things by looking at, for college and career readiness, they're looking at AP courses, for example, they're looking at kids taking advanced regents. That's one area where we may not get bonus points because we don't give it regents diplomas. We do these other programs and that's where we're trying to give feedback to the state to give these other programs that we may have that could be valuable programs as well. Why does it have to be based on the state diploma and not some other criteria? Again, that's other stuff we're trying to push in the next version of this. So sorry to end the meeting on that heavy note, but I think it's important to put it out there for us. I think it's, we have to understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you how you digested that down for us, Tim.
Still digesting. It's a lot to digest.
No other, no other staff reports, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that brings us to board reports and I am not going to give a president's report. Does anybody have a committee report or board reports?
I would just like to say that two Saturdays ago, I went over to Rockland County to watch the Byram Hills Boys Baseball Team play in the class, I think A it was, sectional final against Lakeland, the superintendent and her husband were both there. They got much better seats than I did. But it was a lot of fun. We almost made it. It was a close game, 3-2, but it really was exciting and the congratulations to Coach Saunders and then the kids. Great season, great players. It's always a thrill to make it to the sectional final in any sport, in baseball, something my kids in school never could have imagined it. And here we are with a state championship in our belt and sectional finalist, it's really well done. And I just wanted to give a little shout out to the girls' cross team, really came out of nowhere, had a fabulous year, won a sectional game. So congratulations to all involved there. Really was such a nice, a nice surprise, maybe not a surprise to the players hopefully, but to us who follow it, it was, it was great. So congratulations.
And the athletic awards banquet was last night, which was really well-attended and really nice also. Good chance for them to have an end-of-year closure together.
It's always great. And what are we, this is, two months from now, the fall season starts, so it's a show that never ends.
Yep. Any other committee reports?
Just staying on the athletic front, we had an athletic advisory committee meeting. I think the initial feedback Rob gave on the athletic placement process change from parents has been really, really positive. And sign-ups and interest by some of the younger students that want to play seems very, very strong. So that was, you know, actually seems well-received.
Wow, oh, good.
Obviously a, you know, work in progress, but certainly the initial feedback seems very constructive by the number of parents and students.
Great.
He explained it very carefully and he explained the policy very carefully and very well.
And there was no pushback for the seventh grades not being able to participate in contact boards and all that?
Not a peep. And he was very careful to reiterate that no high school students would be bumped to make space, like they got priority for the spots and then if there were open spots and he qualified, you know, he explained that very carefully.
Music to my ears.
The other exciting part of that meeting was, you know, a couple of students were there, but this anticipation about playing under the lights.
Yes.
For homecoming in the fall, you know, seems, there's a lot of excitement by the students, respect to the homecoming, I guess a week-long, you know, lights on the field, so.
And it is going to be in the spring as well, right?
Yes.
Was there supposed to be in the spring, but it got rained out this year or wasn't that until next year?
Never starting till next year.
Okay, yeah.
It's very, I think it's very exciting and hopefully it'll be a productive and positive experience.
Thank you to all the coaches. They put, they put a lot of time and effort into our kids and it paid off this year. We had many, many kids go to sectionals.
Yeah, it's great.
Very good, thank you. Any others? Communications to the board, none that I'm aware of, anybody else? We have a bunch of board minutes to approve. Why don't we do them all together if anyone wants to talk about any of them separately? We can. Can I have a motion to approve our Board of Education minutes for April 17, 2018? April 24, 2018? May 8, 2018? And May 15, 2018?
Some move.
And a second? Anybody have any comments?
I just, separately, just the first, there are two that I wasn't, wasn't for.
Oh, okay.
The first two. You can do the first two together.
All right.
Okay, let's, let's scratch, let's take this again. Okay, can I have a motion to approve our Board of Education minutes for April 17, 2018?
Some move.
Okay, second, okay. What's that one? All in favor?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. And then can I have a motion to approve our Board of Education minutes for April 24, 2018?
Some move.
Second? All in favor?
Abstain.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve our May 8, 2018 Board of Education minutes?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh-uh. Abstain?
I don't think I was at that.
Okay. All abstain?
Yes, abstain.
Okay. I'll have a motion to approve our Board of Education minutes for April 15, 2018?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I wasn't there, so I'll abstain.
Abstain, okay. I think we got them all now, right? All right.